Good evening. Today is Thursday, September 28, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in our audience and to anyone who may be watching from home this evening. Director Miller, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Director Connor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? I would like to remove the placeholder agenda item, review and take action on a temporary amendment to the memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Burnsville and Independent School District 191 from the agenda. The reason to remove the action regarding the temporary amendment to the MOU with the City of Burnsville is because we are still working with the city to finalize the language in the amendment. Any discussion?
You need a sec. We need to vote on the...
Oh. Any discussion around that amendment, I guess? Or do I need a motion to...
I second your motion to remove the...
Thank you.
Now you can open up for discussion.
Any discussion? I always count on you for the point of order here.
That's great.
Thank you. All right. If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment to the agenda carries unanimously. All right. Now back to the main motion. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. First, we will receive a strategic roadmap dashboard overview report from Dr. Teresa Battle Superintendent, Dr. Chris Belmont Assistant Superintendent, Amina Aftedaw Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Erin Tinklinberg Director of Communication. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you Chair Hume and members of the board. Tonight, staff and I will share baseline data we now have for the strategic roadmap dashboard that you approved to give you an overview tonight. We will give just a brief reminder about the strategic dashboard. As I said, we're going to share our baseline numbers that we have from various data points. We do want to share our accountability reporting. As you know, Minnesota has the North Star Accountability System, and we will be reporting on several metrics from the world's best workforce. And so we have a reporting for almost every month where we will go into a deep dive for specific data. And then more information about the North Star Accountability Report and how we are responding to those data points where we are not meeting our expectations. So I'm turning it over to Erin Tinklinberg for the next slide.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Battle, Chair Hume, and members of the board. Just a reminder slide kind of of where we are at with the strategic roadmap process, that this creation of a strategic dashboard was part of that process. The idea of answering the question, how do we measure our progress towards our vision? And the idea of creating this dashboard and an accountability measure that could be for us internally, what measures we want to focus on and we think are most important, as well as accountability to our community so that they can see how we're doing on those. So the dashboard does identify key metrics that measure our progress. Many of those metrics, and you'll see as we get to it, are things that we've already been reporting or mandated reporting for the state from the state level or federal level. But many of them are specific to us as well. And so it's our dashboard, not just a generic one. As I, as you know, it's organized by strategic directions so it's aligned to our strategic roadmap and also has an enrollment component to it. And the board actually approved the dashboard back in February. So this is just the sort of unveiling of it on our, on our website. So you can see what the dashboard looks like, and then I'll open it. So this is our actual website right now. Now, it's not, it's published right now, but it's not, there's, it's not in the menu system and it's not sort of findable via search, but it will be tomorrow. It'll be up on the, on there as well. So a little information overview about the dashboard itself and then metrics under each strategy as we, as was approved by the board back in February. So under Strategy 1, creating space and opportunity for each and every voice to be heard, you can see metrics that are related to that. So mostly from annual student survey or parent and staff surveys. You see family voices on the right-hand side. We'll go down a little bit further. Strategy 2, actively leading by developing and sustaining diverse and equitable education system. So again, in a handful of sections, achievement metrics, access and representation metrics. And again, family voices and staff voices, how they feel we're being responsive to that strategy or how they're experiencing it. Strategy 3, supporting and leveraging innovation to improve student outcomes and district culture, measuring our college and career readiness, and then an annual innovation report, which I believe Dr. Battle will talk about a little bit later. Strategy 4, engaging our community to ensure common understanding of our strategic roadmap and district work to support it. So again, just hearing from our parents in particular and staff, how are we doing in terms of engaging them in our decision-making process and, and the work that we do? And then finally, enrollment goals as well for the district. Right now, these goals, we don't have baseline numbers for these because it'll be comparing this year's numbers to last year's numbers. So we'll have that updated when we get the enrollment report later this year. So that's the dashboard as it lives on our website right now. And as I said, we'll have that basically live and available for the public starting tomorrow.
Just a note, we do have a workshop for a deeper dive. So we'll actually go through each number with more specificity for you.
All right. I'll turn it over to Amina about the accountability reporting plan.
So the accountability reporting plan, over the course of the year, we will be bringing you deep dive reports on each of the different components. You can see, this is organized by different data points, and you can see that some of them are occurring as early as November with our enrollment and report. Over the course of the year, we'll also be sharing the deep dive into some academic data with literacy report and some world's best workforce and graduation, college and career readiness deep dives, have a chance to hear student and teacher voices about those programs and the ways that we are responding to, to the data throughout the course of the year. Key results from our North Star report. We noticed that our, we could see that our math proficiency levels remain steady at about 32%. So seeing no dip in our achievement was beneficial for us in that we implemented a new math curriculum, and so it was good to, to not see any loss through that implementation dip. And I think we, we saw that coming earlier through our winter data that we shared with you. We continue to want to target and improve areas in our math, and so we expect now to see some improvements in our math scores with the second year of implementation in our elementary and some work that we're doing with our, that I'll talk about a little bit later with our secondary math. Reading proficiency levels, we saw some slight losses in our reading proficiency levels and continued to, we continued to mirror the state at about 10% below the state levels. And so they, they also saw some, some small losses as well. We saw students graduating, the four-year graduation rate for the district wide was 76%, with our high school maintaining at about 85% our BHS. And then our consistent attendance rates, this is a reflection of the consistent attendance rates that are defined by the federal ESEA. And consistent attendance means that students are attending 90% of the school days. In response to the math, we continue to do the math implementation with our K5. We're seeing some really strong results in that teachers are reporting a much higher rigor with the math. And so as students are moving through, we're seeing students engaging more with that higher rigor elementary math. We continue to focus on our middle school math, and those folks are working on a math curriculum that they implemented in 2019. We saw some losses during the pandemic, and so this is a recovery year for the, or last year was a recovery year for them coming out of the pandemic. And we're, we're starting to do a deep dive into the instructional alignment with the middle school math specifically, with significant secondary math professional development. With literacy, I know we've talked a lot about literacy over the last year. This is the full-scale implementation of our K2 systematic phonics and phonemic awareness implementation for our students. We, we saw powerful results in the pilot and are looking at that being a wide-scale implementation. We did move to support that implementation with a teacher on special assignment who will be working exclusively with, meeting with K1 and 2 teams on a monthly basis to observe their implementation, as well as to review their formative assessment data on monthly to address areas in which students are demonstrating a need for more time or more intervention. Our VPK, our voluntary pre-K, has also engaged in that same curriculum for early learning, and we're excited to have them begin that pilot as well to see what impact that might have on our students who will be moving from VPK into our kindergarten. 6 through 8, we've done extensive amounts of professional development over the summer with 6 through 8 teachers, both in language arts and in reading intervention, restructuring the win time for reading intervention for our middle school students in response to the READ Act, making sure that we are able to clearly identify those students who are not reading at grade level, at the middle level grades, and responding to that with some very focused and consistent reading intervention through, from the University of Minnesota.
I have the next one.
Okay.
So previously, the board received information on summer programming from our community education department. So this data, once again, is related to our dashboard. We are very cognizant of the need to help students make up lost credits. So then the Academic Year Day Program, 106 of those seniors needing support, 103 did graduate. And then this past summer program, they had 38 seniors finish their graduation requirements. Planning for this year, previously, we had two credit recovery teachers for the Academic Year Program. We've increased that with another two. So we have a total of four, considering when we disaggregate our graduation data, many of our students receiving multilingual ELL services who speak Spanish are not graduating at a rate we expect. Also, we're looking at our students who receive special education also to help to boost the graduation rates also.
So grateful to the board for choosing measures that are interconnected and, and build off each other. Another one is student attendance. We did see a noticeable drop in some of our student attendance figures from pre-pandemic rates. While that mirrors a lot of state and national data as well, we know that we want to do better. No significant learning occurs without a meaningful relationship, and relationships are difficult to build if students aren't in, in interaction with, with their teachers. The attendance figures do look a little less significant depending on looking at which age level you look at, as well as some other factors that we can get into later. As far as response, it's traditional school responses have been more focused on that middle part of the figure you see, that triangle, multi-layered practices and support. I'm essentially trying to compel or drive a student into that classroom with staff interventions and pieces, and that is still something that exists in our system. But through our work with MDE and our MTSS cohort, our leaders have identified more multilateral approaches and that we feel confident are going to help really get our students building that positive attendance momentum that they have not recovered from, from pre-pandemics.
I have the next two slides, I believe. Yes, our data, our goal to have more diverse staff who mirror the demographics of our student enrollment. So for this year, we have 186 out of 1,180 employees who self-report as BIPOC, 15%. Wanted to note some of the highest percentages per employee group, very evident, superintendent, one out of one. The next group is custodial group, 35%. Our unaffiliated group, 32%. And our educational assistance, 32%. Just wanted to note for our largest group of employees are teachers. In 2022, 23, we had 4%. We've now increased to 5.4%. And for our principal group, it has increased from 14% to 22%. It is important, and I hope we can have some further discussion about that, that we understand the context for how I started, that we would like our staff to mirror the diversity of our students. But there is quite a challenge in doing so. So I wanted to share a little bit of information from the Minnesota Professional Educator, Licensor and Standards Board, or PLSB. So they give a report to the legislature called Teacher Supply and Demand. And in the 2023 report, they share that Minnesota continues to lag significantly in the ability to hire and retain racially and ethnically diverse teachers, even close to the proportion of students of color and indigenous students in the state. So we have our colleges and universities that prepare our teachers. The latest figures are 11.14% of teacher candidates who completed teacher preparation in Minnesota are of color or indigenous. So we're currently at 67%. So it's important for us that while we have this goal, we have to understand our context and why it's so important for us to have other methods to attract people, not normally in teacher preparation programs and candidates from out of state. So to break it down even further, from 2021 to 22, candidates enrolled in teacher preparation programs in Minnesota, white, 79%, African-American, 6.7%, Hispanic, Latinx, 3.88%, Asian, 3.26%. And BIPOC overall, 17.14% out of 12,495 candidates in teacher preparation programs. The next slide really highlights the work we've done in 191. The Burnsville Education Association in District 191 had a historic memorandum of understanding. BEA President Wendy Druge and I co-facilitated a group. We did make some recommendations based on research that there are four components to ensuring that you attract, recruit, and retain. You have to have culturally responsive school leadership, culturally responsive school work environment, recruiting strategies that really target marketing and highlight our students and our stories. And you did receive those recommendations. We also, because we believe we're doing the right work, the Minnesota Department of Education has awarded us new Grow Your Own Grants. Quite proud, the adult grant. We hope to have at least 15 191 multicultural scholars that we will support through scholarships or stipend, academic supports and social supports for them to become teachers. And then we received a second to add to our existing one, a Grow Your Own Student Grant, to offer more scholarship money. I think it can be up to almost $16,000 a year for students based on this wonderful addition that we've received. And lastly, stable enrollment creates stable employment. This board is well aware of what happens when you have enrollment decline and you have rightsizing. It's very tough when those last hired, who are mostly BIPOC and indigenous. So really, we have to give our best for that student daily experience so that we can continue to have stable enrollment. So that upcoming enrollment report in November is another key indicator. We will go a little deeper in that, too. So those are our efforts to attract, recruit, and retain diverse staff. And I have one more. Oh, yes, Innovation Report. I had three slides. So to refresh everyone's memory, the board approved an annual report on school department innovative programs and actions. Wanted to remind that innovation doesn't mean something that's new. It can be new and original, but also it can be an alteration or how we're using something in a different way. A couple of examples, because we started to build our Innovation Report, the department's directors will be sharing how they're being innovative. And so a couple of examples, if you have been in our main office, you may have seen or in community ed, we've added light covers to fluorescent lights to accommodate people that need different lighting. They're very nice clouds. It gives such a calming effect, too.
I had to drop off something a couple of weeks ago. I felt like I was in, there were like skylights, it seemed like.
And then we had an obsolete trophy case at DEC that we're now going to add a huge monitor that will share our events. Currently, we have a very small monitor as soon as you walk in with events and very, it's too small for people to notice. So this one will be difficult to not notice. I'll go to the next slide. Oh, that's it?
That's the end.
Okay. To be continued. That concludes our report.
Thank you. So we're going to have a little Jumbotron in Diamond Head now?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
As long as it has the current time of football game on.
Good start. Yes. Board members, knowing that we have a workshop later this evening to talk more about the dashboard, are there any questions or comments you want to ask now?
I just want real quick. The MOU with BEA, diversity has been so effective. Remind me what the timeframe is on that. Is there an expiration on that, on the MOU?
It was, yes, because it was part of that contract.
This is associate...
Yes. Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Didn't see your hand.
So I'm definitely looking forward to the workshop and appreciated the nuggets of positivity, you know, with the diverse staff, you know, that data. You know that I, I do appreciate data and seeing improvements. And I'm looking forward to looking into the data with you later. It's really hard not to feel discouraged, and I can see it in your faces as well, right? This is, you know, with recognizing that, you know, education is more than just the, the test scores, of course, right? And there's a whole lot more going on in our schools than the math and the literacy. There's a lot of smiles and joy and, and relationships. After 10 years of sitting up here and listening to the results, the academic results, which is really at the core of what we do, I'm glad to have this dashboard because I know that we will do better. It's just, I'm feeling a little discouraged right now. So I know that we're going to, you know, we will boost those scores. I have full faith in what we're doing with math and literacy. And yet, looking back at those 10 years, you know, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just, my heart is heavy, that's all.
Thank you for that, Director Al, and members of the board. So I too, and I think I've shared this before, I was quite discouraged with the, some of the North Star Accountability data. But I was reminded, and I do know this, a test score doesn't capture the brilliance of our students when I visit the schools and just see all the great relationships. So I'm hoping we could have a discussion about a holistic view of students. And then also, I'm very interested in learning students' perspectives about how they approach. So when I was a principal, it was really eye-opening when staff and I took the basic standards test. But I think we need to have student perspectives, too, because they're the ones that sit for those assessments. How do they approach it? What do they think about it? How is it useful? Because I think without context, those, that single test score can be meaningless. So I'd like to broaden our discussion with that. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for now, for our work session later? All right. Seeing none. Next, we will receive committee reports, board appointment, and school assignment reports. I think we'll start this evening with the Legislative Committee.
Sure. The Legislative Committee met on Tuesday, the 26th, so just a couple of days ago. And our topic of conversation was about potentially drafting a letter to our legislators regarding the SROs and being encouraged about the conversation that had occurred with Governor Walz and Attorney General Allison and some of the other legislative leaders with the various law enforcement association leaders, too. We just were interested in maybe drafting a letter of encouragement to have those dialogues continue. Realizing the shortness of the turnaround to this meeting for action, we will bring this to the next board meeting.
Thank you. Policy Review Committee? Anything, Director Al?
Yes. The Policy Review Committee met Tuesday evening, most notably. We went through several policies. We, I don't think we've had as full of a, of a, an agenda. I think in quite...
You've had some pretty full ones recently.
We have had quite some full ones, and we are going to have some more full agendas as well, I'm being told. So expected to see several coming forward next month. Most notably, we will be bringing forward a new policy on the READ Act per federal guidelines and a new online instruction policy per state statute. And additionally, we will be recommending updates to, along with admin, to the student board rep policy based on student-led change at the high school and per recommendations by admin. The committee meets again Tuesday, October 24th, here at Diamond Head at 5:00 PM. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. And finally, negotiations?
Yes, thank you. Couple of things to announce. First of all, we're happy to, to bring out that the... First of all, we're happy to, to bring out that the custodians, representing seventy-one, according to that last slide, of employees in our district have reached a tentative agreement with the district. So that's excellent news. Food Service is meeting next week, was that? Yes, they will be meeting next week. And lastly, the Negotiations Committee did meet last Wednesday, the 20th, with the BEA. Very happy to announce that we have begun contract negotiation conversations for the next contract lasting two years. Both sides presented a great list of opening points, which can be found on our website under the quick links in the right upper right-hand corner. I think it reads "Play Negotiations" or something to that effect. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Director Miller. Are there any other board appointments or school assignments that board members would like to report about this evening? Here goes Director Connor.
Yes, I'm just going to give a report on AMSD. They met on September 9th, and I attended the virtual meeting. Scott Lundquist talked about the SROs in the school district. He also talked about supplemental funding for schools, for our state in the 2020, 2024, and how school districts really need to prioritize our budgets. And then he just mentioned about student learning through AI and online teaching. If you want to get into more detail about that, I'm sure it is on the website, but that's just kind of what he covered. Then we had a guest speaker, Peter Letterman. He's the CEO for Research and for pulmonary data, for our polling research results, that they had for different, I think, teachers and other employees of the school districts. And I'll just highlight a few interesting points that I thought were some of the results for this poll that he gave us results for. The school district, for the school district survey on issues regarding politics, finance, tax breaks, crime, sufficient, or adequate, I'll say, funding for schools, and cost of living, mental health, achievement gap, and racial inequity, all were split down the middle, fifty-fifty. That's how, you know, between teachers, I think parents were in there, and everybody else who took that poll, that's kind of where it landed. The other thing I thought was kind of interesting were teachers paid fairly. Sixty-three percent of people in that survey said that they were. Thirty-four percent said that they don't want more taxes for teachers to get paid more. And then they also said diversity, equity, and inclusion, it was split three ways. So some people feel it's too much, that's too much, it's talked about too much. Some people feel not enough, and some people feel it's just right. Forty-three percent felt that there was too much emphasis on gender identity, and that was not, they also said it's not divided by race, population, rural, or urban income. And schools doing a good job, a majority trust schools and feel they're doing a good job. And taxes are favorable to cost of living, but seventy percent say it's not great, but they just feel that it's favorable. So I just thought those are some interesting statistics, and of course, you can read more about them in the AMSB Board Meeting Report. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Connor. Any other updates this evening? Director Miller?
Just a quick one, that the Burnsville Hall of Fame Committee will be holding their annual Hall of Fame event at the Friday, October 13th football game. There'll be an induction ceremony beforehand in the Maraz Center.
Thank you very much. And I just want to let all the board members know that we'll be receiving the MSBA School Board Self-Evaluation Survey next week. So keep an eye on your email and just complete the survey as soon as possible, and we'll be discussing it in an upcoming board retreat. All right. Now we'll move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Tonight, we are being asked to certify the proposed property tax levy for taxes payable in 2024 and authorize the clerk to execute the levy certification forms in the maximum amount, and to also schedule the truth and taxation hearing on December 14th, 2023, to be held during the regularly scheduled board meeting beginning at 6:30 PM. Stacy Silvai, Executive Director of Business Services, is presenting the recommendation. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the Board. Each year, we need to bring to you the certification for the proposed property tax levy. We are required by law to do this before the end of September, so that the counties can start compiling the different taxes for the cities, the school districts, and send those proposed notices out to residents in November, just in time for the truth and taxation meeting that we have to hold in early December. So we usually bring to you the request to approve the maximum amount, because MDE makes some changes, minor changes at their level. If this were a year in which we were going out for another levy or an operating bond or something else, that may impact it as well. Just some minor adjustments that may occur, but we always do ask for the maximum to allow for those changes over time. Currently, as the percentage rate that we have from MDE, the most recent run is at about a 4.37% increase, just a little over $2 million. Again, that continues primarily to be related to inflation and market value in the, in the district area. We do have a little bit of residual enrollment that is playing a factor in that, as far as you over-projecting or under-projecting in the past, that is now being caught back up. And that's kind of the, the thing, the, the numbers have a rubber band effect. If you overestimate or underestimate in certain areas, not only does it impact your local levy, it impacts the general revenue that you may be getting from the state, and it has a way of correcting itself at a later date. So be careful in adjustments, and that's usually why we bring forward the maximum. Would you like me to read the recommendation again, or?
Sure.
Go with what you have. Okay. It is therefore my recommendation that the Board of Education certify the proposed property tax levy for taxes payable in 2024 and authorize the clerk to execute the levy certification forms in the maximum amount and to also schedule the truth and taxation hearing on December 14, 2023, to be held during the regularly scheduled board meeting beginning at 6:30 PM here at Diamond Head.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Director Alt?
Second.
Seconded by Director Mersal. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 507, corporal punishment, and 514, bullying prohibition policy. Dr. Chris Belmont is presenting the recommendation. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, and members of the Board. Policy 507, changes to corporal punishment and prone restraint, was presented to the Policy Review Committee on August 22nd and moved forward to this meeting. It includes substantial changes that reflect recent legislation, including the addition of the term prone restraint, clarification of reasonable versus unreasonable force, and updates that encompass the new statutes. Back to you.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor. Your second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. This concludes our regularly scheduled board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn to a work session to discuss?
One more.
Do we have one more?
Just present bullying policy 514.
Five fourteen.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry.
So, thank you, Chair. Bullying policy 514 was also presented to our Policy Review Committee on August 22nd. It also includes Minnesota School Board Association recommended changes in light of new legislation. Most of it has to do with the addition of the term malicious and sadistic conduct to different features of the policy.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
Thank you. So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I always seem to feel like I rush you off. It's not intentional. Is there a motion to adjourn to a work session to discuss the strategic roadmap dashboard?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt?
Second.
Seconded by, I heard both of you, I'll say Director Mersal. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and we will re-adjourn in, is ten minutes good for you?
Yeah.
In ten minutes, we'll re-adjourn. In ten minutes, we'll re-adjourn. So. We are now in our work session. And anything you would like to say to get us started?
So Erin's going to pull up the unveiling of the dashboard again, and we'll take a little closer look at those numbers, if that's a good start for the board members.
Works for me.
And then we just take your questions.
Perfect.
These general.
How do you want to proceed? Do you want to have time to look at the little numbers a little closer in each one?
I have a general con, I have a general formatted question or input actually more than the numbers itself. Um, I appreciate that, like for this section, we have student voices, uh, metrics in this section are from annual student survey. And so, I just think, so this page maybe not as, this section, but I think it would be beneficial to have either some small type on each one, or a mouse over, something like that, that gives source and the, um, regularity of the source, like.
Yep, I think the, the plan will be, and we don't have the links in there right now, but the plan will be to link to each of the reports that these numbers come from.
Which is good, but I still think it'd be handy, if I was looking at this, I'd be like, is this a number from five years ago, or does this done, how often does this occur, that sort of thing, you know?
Well, it does say metrics in this section are from the district's annual student survey, which will be conducted for the first time.
Yeah.
I should say, which was conducted for the first time.
Yeah, I know, I, this section does, other sections aren't as concise about it. I think maybe just a format across the whole thing that was, is universal, and again, a mouse over would work for that, or something.
Yep.
And again, because I know some of these are metrics we do a couple of times a year, if I remember, like some of the stu, right, and some of them are just done once a year, or whatever.
Most of them are annual, but I can double check on that. In any case, letting people know when the report is from, and, and, uh, you know, where they can go back and find, uh, previous reports, comparisons, that's a good idea. When they can expect it to be updated.
Yeah, the MCAs are taken twice a year, right, for instance?
No, those are once a year, I believe, the state standardized tests.
Fall, which one is it that's in the fall and the spring? Anyway, doesn't matter. Yeah, just some.
Oh, our benchmark assessments, like we do to fast read, those interim assessments, no. So those aren't included on the dashboard, but you'll get those in those, um, reports, the deep dive reports.
And in terms of, um, results over time, I know this is the first.
I think as we link to the reports, that's where we'll include that information. So for instance, when you get, uh, reports from Amin and her staff, um, about world's best workforce, that always includes some, uh, report, or numbers over time. And so, as people go into the deeper, um, they can find those numbers there.
But, so like if I'm looking at the eighty-five point five percent of students who agree with the statement?
Well, we know whether it's from, or whether it's an improvement or a decline.
Exactly.
So a common, a common tool we use in the business world is a, is just a plus green arrow or a down red, you know, arrow, that would indicate just that that's an up or down metric.
Yep, that sounds good.
I feel like, when I look at it, it kind of just, like, nothing jumps out at me. I feel like there should be, like, a box that's shaded behind, like, the, like, the statement where it says percent of students who agree. Like, it's nothing separating it somehow, I don't know, I feel like. You know what I'm saying? The form, yeah, like, it's a form, yeah, like, I feel like it just kind of all runs together. Like, I feel like it needs to be separated somehow, like.
So you can tell which numbers go with which statements?
Yes, kind of.
I hear what you're saying, yep.
Oh, you mean like differentiating between student responses from staff, parent?
Yeah, like, to have, like, okay, like, no, like, having something behind, it's, it's just, it's just like, I feel like I'm looking at like a white sheet of paper with like these numbers and stuff on it, and I just feel like maybe having like a gray shaded area, like a box for each one, like having each one like in a, in a box, and then having the top part shaded like gray.
Director Werbe, when you say each one, you mean each specific metric?
Yes.
What I'm wondering, kind of related to what you said, and what Eric said at the beginning, I'm noticing we've got the gray box for student voices, and there's some scores underneath the student voices, right next to it, and then below that is family voices. I wonder if there's a way we could more, because when I saw the family voices box at first, I wasn't completely sure if it was above or below until I kind of scrolled down and noticed it.
The, the student voices box on the top right, that's a, that's a typo that I'm noticing now. It should say staff, staff voices, and it should be metrics from the staff surveys.
That's why we're having the workshop before it goes live.
Yeah, because, yeah, because you have, you have staff hanging out there by itself.
But maybe there's a way to more distinguish those three sections in some way.
Yep, yeah, I think those, uh, the boxes that indicate the student voices, staff voices, family voices, there are just a light coloring behind there, and possibly make that a little bit darker to stand out.
I'd almost color differentiate them, so that you know they're the different voices.
How is it planned that this would be incorporated into board conversations, other than being available for us to look at? Are we, remind me, are we having an annual review of this, or we?
So you'll get this one every once we have a new day signed with you, but remember, almost every month, we have a rollout of a different report. And so, um, this file reports, so that's one way you interact with it. You also will get a little bit, uh, school reports. So if we go back to that chart that shows the different marks, that's when you'll get the deeper dive into each one.
Can I ask?
I think during, as part of our practice, I think during those reports will indicate where on the dashboard the numbers, so that will reference them, rather than doing a dashboard report every time.
So, and maybe once a year, we would want to do a work session to just kind of review the overall.
And I, I would be interested in traffic results eventually over some period of time. Is this getting seen by anybody, or used by anybody?
So I will tell you, um, in my rollout, uh, last year, I met with the principals and each building leadership team, and we discussed data. This year, we will have the principal, um, with sometimes the full BLT, sometimes we're just representatives, but this will be a discuss, and they'll have their individual schools, so we'll review that. Um, so it will be used throughout our system with our sites, too.
Is there a way to also add in, like, um, like, the number of responses, so like you kind of know the response tool, you know, so like if you only had five staff respond, or five families say this, you know, maybe the perspective is different?
That'll definitely be included in the report that we link to. Um, I don't know that it would include it on every number, just because it starts to get to be a lot of information, and this, I'm trying to keep this as clean as I can when it already has, you know, quite a few numbers on it.
And then one question.
Suffice to say, I wouldn't present a number if I didn't think it was at least somewhat relevant.
The wall of numbers can be a little overwhelming sometimes, yeah.
But then knowing also with MCAs that, that families can choose to have their kids not take it. I don't know if that takes, takes in account some of those numbers, because they're going to be assigned to zero. It'd be interesting to find out what percentage of our student population do not take the test, because that plays a factor in these numbers.
Potentially, that'd be something.
Amina.
To talk to you.
And Chris, Dr. Belmont.
I'm sure we know that.
I actually have. I know that. That, uh, after the pandemic, our participation numbers went back up into the nineties.
Okay.
Um, we have less than two percent of our students who do formal opt-outs.
As we said while she's looking for that, we're data rich. So, just in the deep dive reports, did they have those questions?
Participation in, participation has been ninety-eight percent, uh, or ninety, ninety-three percent in twenty-twenty-two, and last year it went up to ninety-six percent.
Okay, cool.
So, um, and then we have some kids who don't participate because they are absent, or don't complete their makeups, but, um, we do have a relatively small population that, that does formal opt-outs.
So the, is the ninety-six percent inclusive of all reasons for not completing the test, or is it, is ninety-six percent just the formal opt-out?
No, that's all.
That's all, so that's all, okay, got it.
It's all encompassing, so the opt-outs included in that four percent.
Okay.
Is there a, like, a potential to, um, my mic is loud, um, to add, uh, like a pre-pand, pre-pandemic data, you know, like, we reference pandemic so much, it would be nice to know what was going on, you know, just maybe like a one school year, I don't know, eighteen to nineteen or something, um, to, um, just reference, uh, and the changes that have taken place, and now we're calling this year sort of like the recovery year, and how we, uh, compare to that, um, you know, as we move on.
Yeah, and I think, um, in the world's best workforce reporting, I've tried to present the last three years, and so I've included that twenty-nineteen data point, which was pre-pandemic. Um, this year, when you get that report in October, it will include the fourth year as well, so that you still have that pre-pandemic as a, as a point of reference.
Are the North Star numbers that we've seen tonight for, uh, reading and math, are they from, um, earlier of the school year last year, or like what period of?
They're from, the North Star accountability, um, are from last spring's MCAs.
Spring of twenty-twenty-three?
The spring of twenty-twenty-three, yes. And again, I, um, I think part of, one of the reports I, uh, I think Dr. Battle linked in to Friday Board update included, um, I wanted to give that perspective of what that twenty-nineteen, um, pre-pandemic numbers look like for our students over time. So, I've tried, I, I think you're right, it, it's nice to have that as a point of reference, to be able to see the impact, and then where we've come since then.
I, I use something like that in my own data world at work, so I have like twenty-nineteen stuff, you know, and we, you know, as we roll, then we compare.
Yes.
And so.
I'll be using twenty-nineteen in my day job for the rest of my life.
For a long time.
We start off with general questions, any questions about the actions we're taking?
Well, I guess, and I don't know. I don't, I'll just ask the question, and if you don't have an answer tonight, that's fine. I've just been thinking about persistence, and, um, as it relates to attendance, and that persistence is kind of a two-way street when it comes to students and staff, right, in terms of having our kids in classrooms, and, you know, you've got the students and their families, right, and they need to be persistent about being in school. And then we have the persistence of our staff being in school, and making sure our kids are in the classroom. And how are we talking about that as a system? How are we gauging it, and how are we tracking it to try to make sure that, um, Dr. Belmont, as you mentioned before, you know, learning is, it's kind of tough to have learning happen if, if the kids aren't where they need to be to have that learning take place.
Yeah, thank you Director Alt. Um, as an elementary principal, I always had, um, ninety and ninety-five circled on my whiteboard. Um, I wanted to see at least ninety-plus percent attendance from staff, and ninety-five-plus percent attendance from students. And if I saw those two, it wa, it was very interesting how those two would ebb and flow together. So we, um, so, um, in our one-to-ones, Director Sylvan and I do review, um, staff attendance. We do see correlations between student attendance and student achievement. So we know that that is, um, about culture and momentum.
Is that information shared with the staff?
Yep, uh, well, so I, I then bring that data to our, um, principal one-to-ones.
Yeah, well, I know, I mean, the staff in general, and I don't mean it in a threatening way, I just mean, I mean, I'm assuming, I'm going to make the natural assumption that every educator in our system got into it to impact a child's life, and have a positive outcome on it, and if they understood the correlation, you know, maybe there would be, um, some internal adjustments to, to, to their attendance, I don't, you know, I don't know, but, uh, if they, I think that's been, that's informative, what you just said. I think it's important, they need to hear that also.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I cut you off, feel free to.
Thank you.
So one, just to add one of the things with attendance, it is very complex, and so it's in just the piggy, to offer another perspective about pre-pandemic. So, we really encourage people, if you're sick, stay home.
We still do.
How has that impacted the ninety-five percent? So, I, like many others, a calm and cold, I'd come to work. I don't do that now, because you have to see if it's COVID. So, we really have to look at that complexity, too, and how that has impacted. We now have new health guidance that many of us adhere to. I believe we had the same guidance before, if you're sick, stay home, but you just trudge through. But now people actually stay home.
And we've.
Children and staff, so.
And we've normalized that, we've normalized that atti, attitude with our own staff, and with our students and families, too. Um, it, you know, we've made it less of a, of a stigma to stay home for a day, to recover, um, as opposed to always being at work when you're sick, um, or just beginning to be sick, or almost recovered from being sick, and, and that we've tried to create that as a, a common expectation that they're caring for the people in their work environment, or their school environment, or their classroom environment, by not being there.
Right, and I, I, I completely agree with that, because we do have to care for the people that we work with, both adults and, you know, students. Um, I would tend to think that the, the attendances wouldn't be predictable in terms of the days of the week that they might happen on.
I think that, I think that's another component, and, um, we have a multifaceted, uh, approach to that here, but also, uh, just the, the approach to, um, mental health that we're seeing with our students and our staff, um, where we really are encouraging students and staff to do that self-care, and, um, and, uh, being able to approach that by providing therapy in the schools, by, um, offering more counseling and social work supports, by creating spaces for students, um, to, you know, de-stress, or, uh, regain their regulation, really working on a lot of those pieces where we're trying to create that balance of, are we creating an environment that is also, um, sustaining and nurturing, and, um, lowering the stress levels for, for our students, instead of constantly having them move. And I think, um, I think we can, we can look at that multifaceted approach that, that, um, is coming out of like our student support services, with our counselors, our social workers, our therapists, our, um, third-party, um, relationships with partners, those types of things. But, um, where I think we may have opened the door for lots of students or staff to say, I, I need to take this as self-care, as opposed to now creating better environments and better supports for our staff and our students to better operate in the educational environment. And, um, some things as simple as, um, uh, getting that notification from Human Resources that an additional, um, uh, employee assistance program has been added to support. assistance program has been added to support better mental health for our staff. Those are, those are kind of those multifaceted things that can really impact our staff attendance and that persistence that, that you're referencing, so, so that we are building back our, building back our persistence, our stamina for, for some of those things and I think many of you also work in environments where you're, you're seeing folks building back that stamina and, and I think it's just been very, very impactful for our students.
Yeah, I really appreciate that term building back persistence, Director Marsala, recovery, we are still very much in a recovery and I, I don't want to, I always want to choose my words carefully because I don't want to blame the pandemic, our results are what they are and we own them and we, and we are inspired and motivated by them to do better, it's our children's lives and, and like we still are, are, just to always be in tuned with what happened during that time and then to seeing both, both behaviors we hadn't seen before and I'm not just talking about operas, I'm talking about, you know, the new term that high schools got in touch with after the pandemic was in-school truant, students that came to school every day and did not go to classes. The, so that's in addition, the, and when we really think about it, they were at home, we asked them to be home for many, many months and they had general command over their time. Parents were working remotely, there is, so, so we are, like we just know that students respond to the conditions they're in and I, and I would just share with the board and I know that we will need to continue to check in through this dashboard measures, but I would say there's hope. Early, like September numbers are encouraging when I look at attendance, both staff and students. When I look at suspension data, we're talking about a 70% reduction from September of this year to September last year, that's encouraging, I think, you know, perhaps the legislation has to do with that, but I really think it's tied to wellness and, and, and that recovery and that building back persistence, so I remain hopeful.
Another complexity I would add with the North Star, the federal definition, they do not distinguish excused from unexcused.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we have 170 student contact days, so that 10% is 17 days, so audience, if you're watching, think about the number of days your child has been sick, number of days they didn't come on a Friday or Monday because grandma was turning 100 years old and you were traveling. The deer opener.
Tournaments.
Tournaments, there are at three sport athletes, so I wanted to add that context too. It's very complex attendance, so in a parent's mind, oh, they were excused that date, not in the federal definition, either you're there or not, correct?
Correct.
That also ties into our affinity group work and some other pieces that we have to continue to balance and weigh, so that's why Director Optinal's achievement data is so critical because attendance is one indicator amongst all the other pieces, as well as growth data too for achievement, looking at, we have some real hotspots in a good way around growth data, especially for multilingual students that we are trying to shine spotlights on, learn more about, that doesn't always show up in the proficiency data.
So now we have this dashboard, how often will we be updating the data on it?
As soon as the, as we have new data, we'll put it in there, basically when the report comes, so in October, we have a World's Best Workforce report of some kind.
So it will be something where July 1st, everything is updated, it's
No.
Kind of on a rolling basis, is what I hear.
Yep, when, when it gets presented to the board, then the board will be able to see it in the dashboard at the same time or the next day.
So most of the data that I've shared with you will be shared with the board during the World's Best Workforce, so you have the most updated pieces for the, for the dashboard, but the number that's on the screen right now, for example, is the 1,462 credits, college credits that were earned, that's a reflection of the 2002, 2001, 2021, 22 school year.
That changed.
That is 22, 23.
It's the, no, it's the, it's the 21, 22, we'll be presenting to you the 22, 23 report for last year's and then that number will be updated based on that and so.
Should be updated to say it's 21, 22.
It's the 21, 22.
And then the graduation data is always lagging too.
We usually get that about a week before graduation.
Yeah. So the graduation data that's there, I believe, is our most recent graduation data that was released, again, it is a year lag, so, so it's the class of 2022.
So we have this information here and the idea is that with these markers, that with these numbers, we're demonstrating college and career readiness, that then there justifies that we are meeting our Strategy 3 goal, right? Okay, so of these numbers, are we comparing it to something or a goal for those? So like is there something we're trying to achieve so that, so it's like I see these numbers, but are they good, are they not good, what is they in comparison to towards making progress going up the strategy?
So I have a couple of responses to that, the first is, is that some of them are indicators toward a specific goal. When we think about our reading achievement, for example, that's being measured towards our World's Best Workforce goal or an achievement or an integration goal. Some numbers like the 1,462 credits is simply an indicator and it's, and I think, I, I really appreciated Director Miller's comment about is it more than before or less and is there an indicator of whether that, that's going up or going down because it's not necessarily towards a specific goal, we don't want to say, oh, we hope we have 2,000 someday, instead it's more of just an indicator that students are earning those credits and this is how many there are and so I think it's different for different points of data and I think that goes back to what we said before about them being linked into the broader context of what those numbers mean. Because they, they are kind of empty, sitting there without more context, you know, they are just numbers on, on the page, but they were the ones that we identified as being specific indicators and of whether or not we were achieving our vision.
Right. I'm just thinking of being tired parent on the website, just kind of cruising through, but not want to dive a whole lot deeper to know what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I found parents like about that one, when you do the deeper dot is how much money they've saved in college tuition, so that 1,462 equates to.
About $700,000.
$700,000.
Well, and I think the, Leslie, to your point, you know, the context is, over time, I think considering what kind of context we're, we're going to put around it and Amina appreciating that there will be, for some of these, there will be a report linked behind it to, to provide that context, for others, maybe there's a chart or a graph that, that provides context or an arrow up or down. Admittedly, I'm kind of a data person, you know, understanding, you know, two to three years back, okay, where is it that the district was three years ago with this particular data point, how are we doing without, without making the dashboard completely overwhelming and, I mean, it's nice and simple right now and, and that's, and Erin, I imagine that's, that's kind of where you want it to be, you want it to be simple and straightforward.
Where I want to start at least.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and, and, and it's beautiful, I mean, it's, it's, we want to get the information out, we want people to be able to see this is what, this is what matters to us and context up-down, you know, looking back does matter.
Yeah, I, I would caution us, everything that's been asked about is extremely informative and necessary, but dashboards need to be at the core, very, very simplistic, a number and maybe some motion indication, but that's about it. There should then be a link to something underneath that's going to give you the population, it's going to give you the historical data, it's going to give you charts and stuff, but dashboards need to be very, very simple to start out with, so I would encourage us, I, I've been in these kind of conversations in corporate boardrooms many times and these things can go bloated really fast, so.
Happens in nonprofit boardrooms also.
So.
And then I'm sure when we roll it out, we'll get feedback from the public, questions and, you know, it's new, so. How they navigate it and what they're looking for as a parent, like I, in my previous experience, that one about the credits, parents love the data about how much tuition it saves.
That's what I was going to mention.
That's why I knew, yeah, they like that, so, you know, it's evolving.
It might be good, it might be good for conversations within the schools, right, depending on the family gathering, right? And a building administrator has families coming in for, you know, a particular conversation, hey, by the way, were you aware, and they don't have to go very deep because goodness knows, you know, families don't necessarily want to go very deep, but, you know, to reinforce, were you aware, this is some of the awesome stuff that we're doing.
You mean like at conferences maybe?
Could be at conferences, could be a PTO, could be, you know, a, you know, one-on-one with the, you know, teacher, principal, I don't know, I mean, you guys can figure that out.
This might be a larger conversation for another day, but I'm looking at the Strategy 3, supporting and leveraging innovation to improve student outcomes and district culture and what's there right now is really graduation rates, college credits and rigorous coursework enrollment and then off to the side is the innovation report, which we talked about earlier. I feel like there, I don't, I don't have a specific suggestion, but I feel like there could be more there for some of our, perhaps for students that maybe aren't taking college credits and aren't in rigorous enrollment and how can we look at their, kind of measure their career readiness in some way, so that might be something to think about for the future.
I think one of the other indicators that we had talked about along with the students in rigorous coursework was identifying industry certificates.
Yeah, exactly.
Students who, students who, numbers of students that earned industry certificates or the number of certificates that were earned.
It could be a number and not a percentage and
Right.
Yeah, not everything, I know there's a, there's some numbers in this, but that, that would be very helpful, things like that, I just think it would be good to not, I mean, obviously this is an important one and it should be there, but we have a lot of other students and I don't want their achievements to be undermined or not, not, not appreciated or noticed.
I think one of the reasons is, is that we are still working on ways to count them.
Sure, which is why I said it might be a conversation for the future.
Right, but I, but I, but I agree wholeheartedly, I think that's one of those other indicators that we'd like to be able to, to place.
Is there, is there some way to quantify the pathways program into a couple of bullet points?
Yeah.
You know, 50 non-traditional classes in covering the spectrum or whatever we, however we identify it.
Internships and dollars earned in internships, I mean, once, because we're just kind of starting, starting to get those going.
Yeah, I think, I think those are important indicators of innovation.
Yeah. And student outcomes.
Well, I'm thinking about kind of along the lines of what Scott said, our best program because those are students who don't graduate in four years, they are part of the program, but they have an example of innovative ways of being work-ready that maybe would be a measure that we should shine.
Something along the lines of work experience hours earned.
Yeah, maybe.
I think, I think that, I think there are other ways because we do have some of those innovative programs, whether it's worth experience, work experience and work training through our best program or through our BOSS work experience programs or through industry certificates, internships, other types of things that I think there is a place for, for an indicator under that, under innovation.
And I have it on good authority that we are very data-rich, so I'm sure the data is there somewhere. But like you said, we have to figure out the best way to count it.
Right, and count it consistently.
Any others, comments or feedback for this evening?
Well, I know that we do a lot with our marketing materials already, is this something that we're going to include now in upcoming materials, like I know when we send out stuff, is this something we're going to highlight, like our dashboard?
The dashboard, I, I doubt it, to be honest, it's, it's kind of wonky and it's there and it's data, most of the materials that we'll push out will be more around experience and what experiences our students are having and trying to find a way to captivate or capture that and share that so that people can understand what they'll feel and how they'll be received and what kind of community they'll be part of. We'll certainly, you know, have this available and we'll push it out in different audiences as Director Alt was maybe suggesting as well, there'll be places to push this out and make it available, I'm not sure from a marketing standpoint unless, you know, there are numbers that really indicate here's who we are as a district, when we see that, you know, whichever numbers from our parent survey, you know, 90% of parents say they feel welcome at their child's school, that's certainly something that we would include, not necessarily a direct link to the, to the dashboard.
Okay.
I would agree with what you're saying, I understand your point, I, I, you know, we get a newsletter, I get three different newsletters from the three different schools, digital newsletters from schools my kids are at and they're formatted and laid out or whatever, it would be interesting to maybe just have like a little box, did you know, 93.3% surveyed, you know, understanding our mission, for more information like that, click here to go to our, you know, maybe a good chance to lead people to this, at least for a while out of the gate, a widget, widget each schools could throw onto their newsletters.
That's a good idea.
It's, I was just thinking more about how are you going to direct people to it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily
Yeah, draw attention.
Consider that as part of our, our marketing materials, but as part of just the general community communications that we do, certainly that'll be things that we include, whether it's, you know, in our newsletters, district newsletters, e-newsletters that we send out or as part of school newsletters, I think that's a perfectly good opportunity to do that or through small group engagement, however we do that communication.
This is really awesome, thank you.
A lot of work has gone in, for sure.
Do we know, are there other districts around us that have anything similar like this, have you done any research about that? Or even just, you know, in general in the community, not necessarily right around us, but.
There are certainly examples, I mean, I, I looked at examples of school districts, school district dashboards around the country and, and around here, there are a number of school districts that use proprietary software to present, which is not a direction we decided to go, St. Paul Public Schools actually has a pretty in-depth dashboard, achievement dashboard that I used kind of a, a little bit as a model, but it's hit or miss, there's not, there's not a ton.
We've looked at cities, Burnsville has a dashboard.
City government.
City government.
Governments use it a lot, yeah, we've seen that.
Good.
All right, if there's nothing else, please stand aside.
Thank you.
I was going to have him hit his gavel. Official.